Meeting of December 5th, 2022 to order. And if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Ellen Bass?
President.
Ingalls?
Here.
King? Mayor Philkins?
Here.
And at this time, if someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
We'll go ahead and open the floor for our first public comment this evening. We do ask if you come forward, if you would state your first name and then write your full name and your address for the clerk. That would be very much appreciated. And then also, if you keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Don Koschmeyer, Cadillac, Michigan. I just wanted to check at the city library and see if Alex Jones' new book, The Great Reset, was there. It's the number-one book in the world, except for the New York Times says, "No, it's not." But they said they had it there, but they looked, they said, "Nope, there's a problem. It's missing. Somebody stole it or something happened to it." But I still checked out a copy of Gender Queer, though. That's down there for everyone if you need that.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our work session that we held on November 21st, along with the minutes from the regular meeting on the 21st of November.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. And tonight, we do have some public hearings. And so, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Marcus to go ahead and open those up.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next three public hearings are all related to one another. They have to deal with the city's ordinances regarding marijuana. And just to bring council back in time, along with our public, I would like to explain sort of how we got to where we're at today. And I'll be as brief and as concise as I can in doing that. But sort of, long story short, you know, there are perhaps a dozen or so more marijuana types of licenses that the state of Michigan has created. The city council, several years ago, decided essentially to get into the business of providing the ability for folks to acquire certain licenses available that the state has created. And as a part of that, the city made available two adult-use or recreational retail marijuana licenses, along with two medical licenses for the purposes of medical provisioning centers or medical retail centers. Along the way, the city council also amended its ordinances on several occasions, all doing so in an effort to make our environment more friendly, as we learned more throughout time, more friendly for those folks that were looking at opening up shop essentially in town, the ability to do so. And as a, for instance, one of the things that the city originally didn't allow was co-location, and now the city does allow co-location, meaning you can have both a medical and a recreational license in one facility. Over time, the city did issue the four retail-type licenses, again, two for medical, two for adult-use. The two adult-use licenses have facilities open in town currently. The two medical licenses have not actually opened up, and the companies that acquired them have not opened up. One of the companies has gone silent on us. We have not heard from them in quite a while. Whereas, the other company has, WL Green, has requested that the city consider another amendment to its policy, to its ordinances, that would allow for a medical licensee to also have an adult-use license, to be able to get an adult-use license. In an effort to not open up the proverbial Pandora's Box, as well as in an effort to make it available for these license holders, as well as anybody, to acquire a different license, the city has done a couple of things. One is we went through our planning commission, and we looked at amending our zoning code to actually be more restrictive. And the first public hearing this evening is actually pertaining specifically to just that. And what it does do is it creates a buffering zone of over 2,000 feet between retail-type uses that essentially makes it very difficult for there to be any additional retail type of use within our downtown space, given the locations where license holders currently have tied up, currently have tied up. The second thing that council will be looking at, again, I'm sharing the whole picture at this point, is taking off the cap on the ability to issue adult-use type licenses and medical retail-type licenses. Because if council approves the zoning amendments by allowing the city to control essentially through zoning, again, even if there is a cap that's removed, it would be difficult for there to be these types of uses popping up all over, all over town. And I think this would be a perfect segue for me to introduce our community development director, who's sitting right there, to come to the podium. And if staff could pop up the bubble map, I'd really appreciate it. So we put a map together just to try to illustrate what I'm saying. And so, John, if you could just briefly walk us through that, that'd be great.
Can you get the map a little more centered in the screen? There we go. What I did in this map was I took the B-2 and B-3 districts. It also is allowed in the B-1, but the B-1 districts, there were no B-1 districts touching Mitchell Street. So I took the B-2 and B-3, and the portions of the district that were on either Mitchell or Pollister were the eligible parcels. And then also, the TS-2 district, which is on the west side of Cadillac. And then the red circles that you see are the areas where the new minimal distance between marijuana retail outlets would be, shows you the area that they couldn't be located. And as you can see, that the red circles along Mitchell Street, they're all touching each other, essentially, you know, adding one between the existing marijuana businesses would not be feasible. However, you do see a small parcel on the extreme south side of the city and on the east end of Pollister Street, where potentially, another one could be located. Now, there wasn't a designated site on the west side, so conceivably, there could be one or two on the west side, depending on which lot received the marijuana license first. Because you've got to imagine that that circle that's on the west side, if it were shifted to, say, the parcel that received it was on the very north end of that district, you would have to slide that circle over so that it would center it on that, on that business that received the license. That could create an opportunity for, it wouldn't be a strong possibility, but still would be a possibility for probably two licenses or businesses to locate in that area. But it would all be dependent upon exactly where the business was located. If it was located more in the center, it might preclude, there might only be one that was allowed to go into the west-side district. So that, I know at last meeting, you asked to see that bubble map to see what the impact would be, but this kind of gives you that story. The spatial bubbles were built off the lot lines and not the building lines, so there would be a small discrepancy, only to the extent of the distance between the building edge and the lot line for those parcels. Because if I'm not mistaken, and Laura can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the measurement of the distance was from building to building in regard to the spatial separation.
Thank you, John. And again, what that illustrates is that what is being presented for council's consideration this evening is a very conservative and very restrictive change to the zoning code, knowing that the further request this evening under council's consideration regarding the licensing, you know, sort of at surface value, without understanding or without first considering the zoning question, might seem absurd. And so, I wanted to make sure that we handled the zoning portion of all of this first before you even consider the licensing portion. Because if council does decide to affirmatively approve the licensing component under consideration, I wanted council to understand that you're not all of a sudden opening up floodgates for, for new uses. So Laura, do you have anything that you'd like to add regarding any of what we've said or something we may have left out?
Sure, thanks, Marcus. I think you and John covered it pretty comprehensively. I would just emphasize that the proposed zoning changes would not require any current businesses to move, of course. That would just set the buffer for additional licenses that come in. And on the regulatory end, with the removal of the cap, there would be no competitive process. Applications would then be accepted on an ongoing basis. Of course, they would still have to go through the city's site plan and special land use processes. So they would, there would be that safeguard there of ensuring that the proposed business meets all of the city's requirements.
Thank you, Laura. Mayor, members of council, that concludes our staff.
Okay, all right. At this time, before we have any discussion in the council, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment as it relates to the first one. And so, the zoning is the first topic that we'll talk about. So any of your comments during this public comment would have to do specifically with zoning.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeffrey Schroeder. I work with WL Green Ventures, which is the business that was mentioned earlier, that has been in contact with the city, that was approved for the medical marijuana provisioning center at 919-929 North Mitchell Street. And with respect to this proposed solution, we're very much in favor of it. Being an attorney and a former member of the staff at the Michigan Attorney General's Office, I've been watching this marijuana business change over the years. I used to prosecute people for it. Now, I'm helping them get licenses in a legal and proper manner. And there has been an explosion of litigation across the state of Michigan about these competitive processes. Cities are getting sued all over the place. And I know that the city legal council worked very hard to come up with a solution that would protect the city. And this is the way to both properly allow someone like my client to make use of this medical marijuana approval, because the market has almost disappeared for medical. It's going to be less than 10% of all sales. Allow them to redevelop two buildings, one for the marijuana and another redevelopment for potential new use in the city. And this zoning change is, avoids the competitive process. It avoids the litigation, avoids the staff time going through and determining who the winners and losers are. And I think it's a great solution. It took a long time to put it together, and just want to commend your staff, very professional, very insightful, easy to work with, and very honest and forthright. And it's been a pleasure working with them, and I certainly hope that you would consider this and approve it. And this project can move forward, because otherwise, it will stall, because medical marijuana has just, when it was first approved in 2020, the approval letter came in, a conditional approval, on December 7th, 2020, so it's been almost two years. The market has completely flipped, and to invest all that money and open and just have medical is not going to work. And I will mention, my client, when the extension of the medical was approved by the council, is committed to maintaining medical at this location as well. It's not going to be a bait and switch, where they would take the adult-use and drop the medical, because they know there are people in the community that do have medical cards and do have medical needs for it. So thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your time.
Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to any discussion among the council as it relates to the zoning.
Well, I do appreciate the work of the planning commission. John Wallace, thank you. The bubble graphs are important to look at when you're talking about setbacks. I think if I were going to entertain this, this type of zoning change, and I did listen to the planning commission meeting, that it would have to be more like 8,000 or 10,000 feet. But looking forward into what we have tonight, since, you know, I don't plan on supporting the next two pieces that we have, and I think that if council does, or if the city does decide to let more shops in town, that I don't want to restrict them. Maybe, maybe they will decide in five years that they want Marijuana Alley and they don't want a setback. So I don't necessarily want to vote for this, because I don't plan on voting for the next two. Like I said, even if I were to entertain this, and we were to get to 8,000, 10,000 feet, I still would feel like that's being slightly restrictive for a process that I'm not really going to be a part of. If, you know, Marcus, you ever came to us and said, "I think something's going bad at the state. I think the legal winds are going to swing. These caps aren't going to stand," or whatever, that would be a point where we'd need something like this immediately. And, you know, I hope we keep an ear out for that. But I'm not aware that that's necessarily what's happening. So even though the setback conversation is a nice zoning conversation to have, I, the only reason I'm not supporting it is because I think it's a conversation for a different time. And I don't necessarily want to make it small or make it big. I think that the situation should be dealt with when, when, or by someone who's planning on increasing the number of licenses. And I am planning on voting no for the next two, and as a result, I think I also am going to vote no on this, on the same grounds.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That makes sense. I do, however, you know, I feel the same way you do about the next two. But I, I think that if all of a sudden, the caps that communities put in disappear, to then scramble to create zoning at that time, does put that, the community at risk. Therefore, I was really in favor of doing the zoning to keep, to make sure that we don't end up with, you know, Marijuana Alley, and then not change our other things at this time. But as a safety valve, to make sure that our zoning protects us if all of a sudden, there's a court case that says, "Ah, your caps are illegal," and then, you know, and then what do we do when somebody is, you know? So I see that as, I see the zoning as a safety valve, and I don't feel like changing. I've heard from people, too, that are concerned about us changing the other things at this time.
I think the zoning could be changed in the future if we need to. I'm against it, too. We've all received phone calls from people, nothing positive about any of it. It was pretty broad-minded of the council to bring in two stores in the Cadillac. I was surprised. I was okay with that. This can be there if we need it. As of now, we don't need it. We can implement it pretty quickly. It's, it's just not right. I just, and all three are no, not, not no. And then the thing is, as we know, what bothers them, too, is as we're changing, trying, thinking of changing it again from the original, we can always make changes in the future, which kind of makes me nervous if you change it to a boundary of, the bubble boundary. Well, in the future, you can take away the boundaries.
Right.
But we don't want that. We don't want boundaries. We want max two stores in Cadillac.
It's always, it's always something that can be changed, right? Through the planning commission, and you watched the planning commission, and there was some really very thoughtful discussion, you know? And improving zoning at this time doesn't approve the other two. It simply puts the zoning in place, should in the future, after you and I are gone from the council. The work has already been done to put the zoning in place, so I'm okay other way.
To take you up on the conversation, because I did, prior to deciding this, spend a bit of time on the zoning bubbles. Like I said, I watched the planning commission. I was playing with, you know, these setbacks, the radius. And, you know, Joe, who sits right here during the planning commission, said, you know, why not, you know, he asked, "Why not 8,000 feet? Why not 10,000 feet?" You know, I know the planning commission, I think, was trying to avoid the existing nonconformity at some point, or just to have the bubbles touch. I mean, if you wanted to avoid the nonconformity, you could go up to the 4,000 feet or so between the two buildings. And, you know, even though the bubbles would overlap a lot, they wouldn't touch, you know, they wouldn't touch the side. But to keep it out of Mitchell Street, it'd be more like, you know, 8,000 feet. If you went to 10,000 or 12,000 feet, you'd now be eliminating out of the interstate part, which has its own planning commission, I understand that, and still be leaving it in Cadillac West. So I think if I was going to, it's hard to have the debate without a couple of different options. And I think without the, without the bubble maps, it makes the conversation a little more clunky. So I would be okay with implementing a zoning, you know, this safety valve, like you guys are saying. But I would like to get, you know, one more crack at it. I'd like it to be a little bit different. I don't know if you, you know, should the, if the state lifted everything, like what would you want it to be? I'm not sure that, if the state lifted everything, that I would want a recreational shop to be allowed on our Mitchell Street, basically, from one end to the other. Now, would I mind if it came in Cadillac West? You know, that's, I don't have as much of an opposition to that. I don't want to make that decision right now, because we could, we have it before us. I think this is a matter of timing, and the answer for me on that is not right now. But if, you know, if we're doing the safety valve, as you said, I think it should be more like 8,000 and 10,000 feet, and we should get to look a little bit more at the maps in case that rug is pulled out from underneath us by the state.
Would someone entertain a motion?
Well, I want to hear from Marcus.
Oh, okay, yeah, absolutely.
Good conversation. Just a couple of more sort of fun facts to help with the debate, if there is any more debate to have. Your current ordinance, which would not change as a part of these modifications, already restricts marijuana retail shops from your core downtown. Someone may have to fact-check me, but I believe, just generally speaking, marijuana retail shops cannot be located along Mitchell Street between North Street and South Street. If it's on the ground level, they are allowed. Sub-ground level, which is how you have one retailer currently within that area, but it's below grade and has no frontage on Mitchell Street. They are allowed above grade, and as you know, your downtown does have multiple-story buildings. But again, licensing is limited to two and two, and all four licenses have already been, already been granted. So that, that question is, is out of there. You know, regarding the adjustment of borders and whatnot on the bubbles, as Councilmember Ingalls, you're talking about, it might be more something for our attorney to clarify. But I know that because the city has entered into the fray, we did not opt out of the recreational or adult-use type licensing, and we are opted in, in terms of the medical licensing. We need to make sure that we don't zone ourselves to where the use isn't allowed anywhere. And so, I would be just cautious that if we were to put in, like, using a number, like a 10,000, you know, foot spatial separation thing, it might make it where, you know, where it precludes any additional anywhere, other than perhaps on the west end of town, which might be okay, but that would really be more of a question for Laura to address. And if it is something that she says is okay, council does have the ability of amending on the fly, as you do with most everything. So, I don't know, Laura, is there anything you want to throw out there?
Well, I always say, it doesn't really make sense to allow a use and then impose zoning that does not allow that use, right? As a common sense matter, if you are going to increase the number, which I don't know whether you will or not, and then put in place buffers that would preclude any additional facilities or establishments, then it's just sort of meaningless, right? The cap might be lifted, but it doesn't actually allow any more. So I'm just not sure it gets anyone anywhere. Speaking to, I did hear a comment about whether the state is going to prohibit caps at the municipal level. I'm not aware of any legislation pending that would do that. Of course, it could happen, although with it being an initiated statute, it would require a higher vote in the state legislature than a typical law. Never say never. So that, I suppose, could happen in the future. Beyond that, I guess the only other thing I would say is that certainly, you could approve zoning changes and still not approve the lifting of the cap, and that would have potentially the effect, if there were some change at the state level. It would also still apply if one of our existing adult-use retailers closed shop, you know, and that license became available again, and we did another competitive process and awarded it to another business, and they would then be subject to a buffer where they could not open within that, you know, slightly more than 2,000 feet of another business. So, Marcus, do you think that helps?
I do, and I appreciate that summary, Laura, because ultimately, you know, whether you address in an affirmative way or not, any of the licensing considerations later this evening, the zoning consideration does create a more restrictive and conservative environment for the entire program to fit into. And certainly, zoning could also get looked at again and amended again, but it is a multiple-step process. It requires both a public hearing at your planning commission level, and then, you know, what we're doing here, again, a public hearing. And so, the, you know, if the council is looking at taking a more conservative approach with things, instituting the request for the zoning change certainly helps go down that road versus, versus not. So I don't know if that helps with anything.
Does, I have a question. If we, you talk about the process, so this is a public hearing to change the zoning, and the suggested setback was 2,284. If we decided to put this specific one off till next time, but we wanted to entertain the 10,001, the 7,200 one, and the 4,000 foot, so we wanted to look at the three different setbacks on a map and then make our decision that way? That's still part of this? That doesn't require the whole process again, because it's this zoning, just with the updated number?
I would believe so. Laura, could you opine on that?
Yeah, I think it's within, what we don't ever want to do is completely change what's in the ordinance, right? Notice it out and have a public hearing on this, and then impose some completely different regulations. But where we're just talking about changing the numbers or the distance of the buffer, that's still within the scope of the nature of this amendment. So anyone with an interest in that buffer would have had ample notice to come and speak about it. So I do not believe you would need to have another public hearing on different buffer So I do not believe you would need to have another public hearing on different buffer requirements. You also could refer it back to the planning commission to consider different buffers and what that looks like on a map, um, you know, what the practical effect is of those different measurements.
Yeah, I could, I mean, either one of those suggestions that Laura made, I'd be willing to go along with. I could, um, I would take this conversation up with you guys again next time, or refer it back to the planning commission, whatever you guys thought.
And if you wanna give us sort of concise direction tonight with different buffering zones, you know, we can work on that and bring it back at your next meeting.
Can I ask a question? Excuse me. So the two thousand two hundred and eighty-four feet, um, was that, um, maybe John can answer this, was that designed so that our existing retailers are not out of compliance with the zone? Because then, that's what I was thinking, because it's such a, I mean, it's such a, it's not a, a round number? So was that the thinking for this?
The existing would be grandfathered in, uh, and I also believe, and John, you'd have to clarify, but I also believe that they do fall, uh, within that buffering zone, and it would preclude the opportunity for any additional license, uh, to be, uh, or shop to open up in your east side of town, other than one on the south end of town off a pollister, which is clearly outside of the downtown zone. The only other potential would be to see, uh, potentially one shop, maybe two, but likely, probably just one on the west end of town. So.
So the twenty-two eighty-four, right, is half the distance between, um, the existing two recreational licenses? And the, and the idea there is that the bubbles would just, um, touch?
Yes, the two bubbles you see on the southern part of the city are, are touching, and that's where that number came from. A much larger bubble would probably not be needed, because you have specified the districts that you could have, have them in. So, say the Terry D. project in a mixed-use PUD, they would not be allowed per zoning, so you don't have to set something large to cover that district, because they're not allowed in that district at all anyway. So, if you want, if the goal was to have, say, one in the west side, you could modestly maybe increase this, the buffer to, uh, say, somewhere between three and four thousand, and you would accomplish that goal. It wouldn't have to be eight or ten thousand, uh, square feet to achieve what, what you're trying to achieve. If, on the other hand, the goal was to not have any on the west side, then a much larger distance would be needed. But a relatively modest expansion from the two thousand two and, two hundred and eighty-four, uh, would, would, could eliminate it from Mitchell entirety in ter- in terms of new outlets, but possibly still allow one to be on the west side.
So four thousand feet, would get that?
I believe so.
And the distance between, um, the, the two licenses is about forty-two hundred or forty-four hundred? Distance between Loom and Doongrass?
Well, if you double the two thousand two eighty-four, that's roughly what we're talking about.
And then, so like, the largest, um, bubble you could have while not having a nonconforming use would be like, just a couple feet below the distance between them? Like, the bubbles overlap, but the buildings aren't within each other's bubbles, so that's like the forty-four hundred, or what is it, forty-three hundred?
Yeah.
And then, and then, so like, the distance, like, because on the north end of town, though, that whole row, row of buildings is, uh, eligible, right? That's where we have our, uh, medical licenses.
Right. The, yeah, you, you have bubbles up on that map for the two medical, uh, that were, that were given, and those are the two northern, two northern bubbles.
So to keep the recreation.
And so, they're, they're already severely overlapping, so there would be nothing in that area.
To keep, um, the, if it was an uncapped recreation situation, like we're discussing with, with the state, to keep that, the bubble would have to be, um, basically the distance between the downtown license, which is Doongrass, and the edge of town. Which is where I think I get like, se- like seven thousand instead of four thousand. But maybe it is, like you said, four thousand. But that, what we'd be looking at, the di- the distance between Doongrass and the edge of our city, city line?
Well, it depends on how, what happens with the two medical. I mean, if, if those are given the ability to do both, then the distances would have to work off of those locations as well.
So council can amend and consider, or ask us to, you know, put another map together and bring it back to your next meeting?
Or table it for further discussion? I'm for that.
That's fine, we can table it. It doesn't sound like, yeah.
Do we wanna try to take it up again in two weeks and, and pass this as a safety net? Or is that, is that not?
I, I would. I just, I don't like the idea of, um, you know, a, a court case can instantly change the world. We've all learned that, and so, um, to have safety nets, safety valves in place is important to me.
So it sounds like we wanna, um, put it out for the next meeting, and then have staff do the different distances, bubble maps, for us to take a look at and for consideration?
And, and I think, John, if you're still listening, you know, the, probably need to show the map in a couple of different ways. You know, council, just to reiterate, the city has already issued the medical licenses for those shops on the north end of town. So if they were to open, you know, the bubble wouldn't have to be as big. If they weren't to open, then presumably the bubble wouldn't need to be bigger, hence where you came up with, uh, seven thousand somehow, you know, some, seven thousand approximate foot distance. So, uh, John, you probably need to look at creating a couple of different variations to show or to illustrate that, um, accordingly, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. All right, that's what we'll do then. Thank you.
Thank you. As we move on to the next two hearings, it would still be appropriate, uh, for city council to open up the floor, uh, and invite the public to comment, regardless of whether action is taken tonight, or if you choose to, again, table to the next meeting as well, it's certainly up to, uh, council's prerogative.
Okay, and so the second one is that we would be, um, opening up the medical for, for both recreation and medical.
Yes, you would be removing, um, and I apologize, just quick re- reiteration. These next two hearings would be, uh, regarding the removal of the licensing caps for both the, uh, medical, uh, retail type, uh, facilities, as well as then the adult use or recreational retail type facilities. My.
We just have to do it twice, 'cause right now, we currently have recreational, and we have medical.
Yes, and, and you have an ordinance that governs the recreation program or adult use program, as well as an ordinance that governs the.
Yes, okay.
Medical program. And my recommendation, uh, mayor and members of city council, is that, um, unless, unless you are knowing for sure that you wish to vote, um, uh, against these, I would say, don't put them in, in, in the affirmative until you have your zoning in place.
Seriously?
So, perhaps open and close the hearings, and then table, or however you wish to, to move it forward.
Okay. So, uh, we'll open the public hearing for the second one, which is to remove the licensing cap on the rec- recreational marijuana businesses.
Good evening, uh, mayor, members of council. My name's Michael Dowdell, I'm the vice president of Loom. Uh, we are one of the operating retailers in the city. Um, we have thirty-two open locations across the state, uh, twenty-eight of them are adult use only. Eight of them have both licenses, medical and, uh, adult use. With me also is Francis Rosales, who's our store manager. We're the largest cannabis, uh, company in the state, and we're also the largest adult use, um, cannabis retailer, you know, in America. We had to compete, uh, for, for, uh, the initial license. It was a rigorous competition, in fact, uh, it was one of the hardest ones in the state. Uh, we were really excited about that. Couple of things that we were required to do as part of the initial license was the facility design. Uh, we had state-of-the-art Cadillac, um, uh, facility, uh, we had, uh, significant glazing, landscaping, screening, um, lots of different things were required. In addition, we had a very energy efficient building. Uh, we had to make sure that we also took care of our, uh, infrastructure impact, things like the landscaping plan, bike racks, air pumps, uh, all in, we spent over two and a half million dollars. Uh, we developed the site with the understanding that there would only be two stores in Cadillac. The, the new ordinance doesn't put any of the above requirements on the new recreational stores, as I've heard you say this evening. I'll be honest, in my opinion, Cadillac can't support more than two recreational stores. We are just starting to do well at the Cadillac store, it's been open about a year and a half. We've been open, um, uh, always for, for both, and we've still not recouped our financial investment. We've, as I said, we have thirty-two stores, we had to close four stores last year. Various cities, uh, perhaps were overzealous, and we were as well, by opening stores in markets that just simply couldn't afford more than two or three retailers. And I'd hate to say that happened for us, and I'd certainly hate to see that for the city of Cadillac to open businesses for a year, year and a half, only for, to have to close them later. So, um, we play by the rules. I strongly encourage the city to keep the ordinance the way it is, and, uh, I'd just like to thank you for your consideration. Thanks.
Don Koshmater, Cadillac, Michigan. Yes, uh, speaking on the matter of zoning and, uh, licenses, I had a medical marijuana provisioning center in Cadillac area for three years. Had nothing but trouble. I would have been happy to pay a, any licensing fee, back taxes, whatever, anything at all. But, uh, TNT and the powers that be, and big douchebag millionaire companies just come by and steamroll Mom and Pop right out. So that's exactly what happened. Makes me wanna, makes me wanna puke, but I got a strong stomach.
Seeing no one else, we'll move, uh, we'll close the public hearing and move to discussion amongst the council. And/or if.
Uh, no.
You wanna make a motion?
If you'd like to just make a motion, that's okay to.
Make a motion to.
Not.
Okay. Make a motion not to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section ten-two of the Cadillac City Code relating to recreational marijuana establishments.
Support.
Councilmember King, Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. And at this time, we'll open up the third one, which is the hearing to, uh, remove the licensing cap on the medical marijuana facilities. Seeing.
Don Koshmater, Cadillac, Michigan. With the, uh, regulations and the new laws they passed, uh, the licensing, or the capitalization requirements alone would crush Mom and Pop from having a business and a piece of the American dream.
Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment and give it to the council.
I suppose I will make this motion, um, to deny the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section ten-three of the Cadillac City Code relating to medical marijuana facilities.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. All right, thank you. And that takes us to the city manager's report for this evening.
Thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council. Good debate and discussion, and we'll bring back, uh, the zoning component, uh, at the next meeting. Give me just a moment here to, to regroup. The, uh, first item under the city manager's report, uh, is a bid and recommendation regarding the, uh, household hazardous waste, uh, program. The, uh, city, um, is recommending that we go with our low bidder, Environmental Recycling Group. Uh, they have been our vendor, uh, for several years, and provided, uh, great, uh, service to us. Uh, also, uh, Wexford County has, uh, expressed, uh, their interest in, uh, continuing to share in, in the costs, uh, so that it's open to more than just, uh, uh, city residents, but also to, uh, county residents as well. Uh, and, you know, as a quick aside, you know, the nature of this program, uh, diverts, uh, materials that otherwise can be recycled, diverts them from the landfill, uh, which potentially could create, uh, environmental issues down the road. So it's a, a good program for everybody.
I agree. I'll make a motion to award the contract for household hazardous waste collection services to Environmental Recycling Group of Livonia, Michigan, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, in accordance with their bid.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council. Uh, the next item, uh, again, is regarding a bid and recommendation, this time, uh, with respect to a water and sewer rate study. And as council mayor may not recall, as a part of your, uh, budgeting workshops, um, much earlier, uh, this year, there was discussion of us wanting to do a comprehensive, uh, water and sewer rate study. And, you know, the purpose for this study is to really get, uh, additional empirical data, uh, on the system that helps us arrive at what water and sewer rates should be. And the reason why, you know, we, we need to look at that is because, uh, we wanna make sure that we are providing, uh, enough, uh, resources to our infrastructures, that we never find ourselves, uh, in a situation where we have, whether it's our drinking water system, or our sanitary, uh, system, uh, in a state of disrepair, without the necessary ability, uh, of, of, of maintaining it, uh, or ensuring that it doesn't even get, get to that point, obviously. Um, so, uh, bids, and bids were received. Uh, the, uh, recommendation, uh, this evening, uh, does include, uh, a subscription, uh, to the wat- uh, for the Waterworth, uh, software, uh, based, um, uh, system. And Owen, I know that you had sent me, um, something, and I didn't send it out, uh, and I apologize for that, but it was additional information about the rate study itself. Is there anything you wanted to add to the value of what this study does that I maybe didn't admit, maybe didn't cover?
I guess I would just quickly add, this is not a rate comparison. You know, this is not, we're not going out and comparing ourselves with peer systems or anything like that. This is a very comprehensive review of our water and sewer system, billing, our fund, our reserves, our capital plans, putting all that together into, um, pieces of, of data and crunching those out, uh, using this software that will, will, will result in a very comprehensive set of deliverables, I think, for council and for staff as we go through the budget process. So it's, it's gonna be a great tool.
Thank you. And by awarding it now, also we'll have the ability of, of having this data, um, by the time we start getting into our fiscal year twenty-four, uh, which is our next budget, program. So the recommendation this evening, uh, would be to go with Municipal Analytics in accordance with the proposal, including the subscription, uh, to the Wentworth software.
I just have to ask, why the huge difference in the cost of those two companies?
Right.
You know, I didn't ask that specific question. I did, I did contact, because several of the, I, because I always have that same concern. So, I contacted, uh, two of the people that Municipal Analytics used as references are, are acquaintances of mine through various finance officer groups in the state. So I contacted both of them, just to get a feel for, you know, is this company who they say they are? And, and they were both, would recommend them without hesitation. And I think they, they're smaller, so I would assume that means, you know, less overhead. They're very specialized just to this type of, of work in their consulting firm, so I think you don't have that whole, you know, larger corporation that you're trying to, to fund as well. So I think the, the smaller nature, but, but sharing those concerns, I talked to the owner of the firm, uh, for a extended period of time about the work that they were gonna do, and I talked to two of the references that I know. And I'm very comfortable. I, I don't have a specific answer for, for why the huge difference, other than, I think this is a smaller firm, very much targeted at this type of work, and, you know, we're kind of a median size system, system relative to the work that they do, so.
It reminds me of, um, when we, when we switched our.
It reminds me of when we, when we switched our IT provider.
IT, no kidding.
It was the same thing. It was like, why, how could this possibly, and we're very satisfied with that. I think this is so responsible.
I was going to ask about the one-year subscription fee. Like, is that, is that a nominal amount to renew, or will-
It's about the same to renew. So it's pretty expensive, about $7,000. But what it does also, though, is then, you know, I'll spend the time working with the consultant. They'll build it all to be able to generate the models. But part of that will be, you know, I'll spend some time with them, learning this piece of software. So instead of having to spend $18,000 or whatever it would be to update the study, you know, we could add this into our IT budget to pay this subscription and be able to refresh these numbers, to run different scenarios that would then generate, you know, additional projections. Or we could let it lapse. It's kind of, you know, I think that's the benefit of it. We're not signing a contract for multi-years of this, but the subscription rate is about $7,000. But even baked into the proposal, it was the same as doing it without it. So it made a lot of sense in talking both to the firm and the references. Do the software, then make the decision based on how you feel about it once you've worked with it for a number of hours. So that's the plan.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion. Or did you have something?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, go ahead. Have at it.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for a comprehensive water and sewer rate study to municipal analytics in accordance with their proposal, including the subscription to Waterworth software.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, and then the next thing on the agenda is to talk about a Spark Grant resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Sort of a quick backdrop to where we're at this evening. As folks may or may not recall, last spring, staff was in front of city council with a request to consider a resolution of support for an MEDC-based grant initiative. I think it was called a place and prosperity-type grant. And I know I'm butchering the name of it, but nevertheless, the state agency was the MEDC through the CDBG program that they facilitate. At the time, we were looking at trying to get funding to do a picnic shelter, a public dock, fishing pier, walkway behind the pavilion with some shoreline restoration work, some infrastructure assistance down by the Capps Veterans Field, as well as a kayaking launch by the senior center. The local match that we had identified in that resolution of support was for a couple hundred thousand dollars, and we let it fly. And unfortunately, we were not successful in getting the grant. However, with a bazillion dollars, to use that number, out there through the feds, the state has created another program, this one through the DNR called the Spark Grant, very, very, very similar in nature. The slight difference between this resolution of support versus the one from last spring is that the infrastructure-related project is not a part of it, nor is the kayak launch. However, what's added instead is a replacement to the drop-down sides or the screens at the market, looking at a much different solution, as well as trying to perhaps look at getting a mini children's play area put in, put somewhere into the commons area, maybe even by the, maybe even by the trailhead. Also, instead of it being a $200,000 ask in terms of a support from council on a local match, it's only a $100,000 ask. And the council needs to understand that the funding that we would look at, you know, to use, or the funding sources that we were looking to use for that local match would come from predominantly our own ARPA piggy bank that we have, from the funding that we had received, coupled with potentially some of the general fund dollars that we have available as well. And so, you know, if we didn't have the availability of those funding sources, we wouldn't be here this evening requesting council support for our application. We have no idea if we'll be successful in this grant request. There are more municipalities with more money or more requests that go out to the state versus money that's available. And you're more likely not to get awarded the grant versus getting awarded the grant. But, you know, if you don't put in for it, then you don't know if you're going to get it. We are certainly going to keep our fingers crossed. And, you know, as we hear from our contacts and liaisons with the state as well, as the state is still looking at trying to spend money, we anticipate that there will be down the road additional grant programs that come about from time to time. So I'm not trying to say this is it, but this is-
Well, I would like to just remind everyone, both here in the council chambers, the council, and, you know, people out in the public, that, you know, when we think about all of these things that are listed under this grant, the possibility of what we could be able to do, this isn't something new. This is something we've been planning since we, a decade ago, when we did the public charrettes downtown, and hundreds of people participated in that. And everything that we have accomplished thus far with the Cadillac Commons was because we took, we supported investing in ourselves. And if we, in my humble opinion, if we have the opportunity to bring $850,000 in our community to do these projects by paying $100,000, should we be awarded the grant, then I think that we should do it. I mean, when we got the ARPA dollars, you know, we got a million dollars from, you know, the COVID dollars. And shortly thereafter, we heard that, you know, through MML, that we had the opportunity to slow down on what we were going to use those dollars for, and there were going to be matching dollars available. So we had the opportunity to grow that, that million dollars into maybe 2 million. And this is a perfect example of how we held on to those funds for the perfect project. And if we were awarded this $850,000, I think that that's a wonderful investment. I agree.
I think if we get this grant, this will be one of the biggest successes that we've had. And we've had a long string of successes. But if the city were to get this, to be able to leverage 100 grand into, you know, 950, you know, that's, that's better than we've done in the past, and we've done pretty good in the past. So.
Big bang for your buck.
Yeah. I think that's, that's wonderful.
I hate to be the grumpy one.
But you will.
Of course.
It's okay.
Double advocate.
That's okay.
The last time we talked about this was April, I believe. You've mentioned that.
A grant.
Okay, we mentioned it in April. We got nothing, nothing was ever said to me, or as far as I know, Steve King, about this situation until we opened up our email or our packet on Friday. So we had, had no idea this was coming until two days before the meeting. And we talked about this before with you in the conferences about keeping us aware of things that are going on and not to, I bushwhack us with things at the last minute. Now, you've got a couple of things. $100,000, and there's no guarantee. It's just going to be 100,000. Overruns, et cetera. You don't have any percentages as far as what is coming out of where, the general fund, community development, or ARPA. So I think we should table it and talk about it. I mean, we tabled the zoning thing. We've had no, the five of us hasn't sat down and talked about this. It sounds great, I'll give you that. But I just don't like the idea of two days before the meeting, we're told about what's going on.
Well, I, you know, and again, respectfully, I would just remind you that back in April, when the staff was working on a grant opportunity, we, we said, yeah, we approved $200,000. Should we get that grant? We all collectively agreed that, yeah, we need to go for that. I mean, that's one of the things we do, is we challenge the staff to go out and look for grant opportunities.
Entirely different situation, and not the point I'm trying to make.
Okay.
Which is, don't come to us on Friday with a situation that was from seven months ago with no input or updating us. It feels like we're getting bushwhacked that we should sit down and talk about it. I think it would pass, but we do need to talk, as far as I'm concerned. I have a feeling I'll be outvoted 3 to 1 anyway.
All right. Thanks, Brian.
Well, I think, too, this is a, we're approving a grant request. We're not approving a $100,000 spend. We're not approving a transfer into our budget or out of our budget. I don't think it would be wise, but, you know, I, along with everybody else, am fully within our rights to support this, apply for it, and then sync the whole thing because we don't like it. I think this grant request is fantastic. You know, when we come down to project planning and spending this money, there's still bid, there's a process, there's engineering, there's planning.
And along those lines, and I apologize to interrupt, but what you, what you are being asked to approve tonight is your support of our grant application that also signifies your support for making, for providing the local match. Should the city be successful in receiving this grant, we would need to, depending on the timing of all of this, either amend our budget to accept that $850,000 check that we'll be getting, as well as appropriate the $100,000 or whatever the number is match. Or if the timing lines up perfectly, which I suppose anything's possible as a part of your budget process, then we would just do it as a normal part of the adoption of your fiscal year '24 budget. So tonight, Robert, Councilmember Ingles, and everybody else, you're not appropriating any dollars or signing on the dotted line for any specific piece. You're just framing the support for these projects, which have all been discussed in the past.
I also, I think it's really a real positive thing that a grant that we did not get, that you use the same thing that we approved, the same kind of thing that we approved, and continue seeking grants for that. That's, I think that is doing your job really well, and I really appreciate that. So I'm going to-
Tia, if I can just add one thing before you make that motion, because I don't, I don't want us to lose sight, and I want us to be very proud as a community of the collaborative spirit that we have had in almost the last decade since I've been here, you know, working within the community with the Visitors Bureau and Chamber of Commerce, the DDA, you know, through our crowdfunding, everything that we did to be successful. It takes a community to make these things happen. And so I just, I want to make that part of the discussion.
Because it didn't come from us. This came from the community to us. Yeah. So I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the submittal, I love that word, of a grant application to the Spark Grant, Cadillac Commons enhancements.
Support.
Councilmember King. Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
No.
Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, tonight in our packets, we do have the minutes from the Planning Commission's last meeting, just for us to review at our leisure. And then at this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment this evening. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order, should anyone have anything.
I don't think so.
A brief note, the mayor and councilperson Ingles and I had a brief discussion on the possible sesquicentennial coming up, coming up being three years away. But it's never too early to plan. I'd been talking in 2020 with Richard Schultz, the manager of the theater, about doing it in '21, and we backed off from that. You brought it up earlier, Mayor. We need to get people involved. I think it's a great idea. And it's never too early to start something that should have a big scale. It's very important. I was here in '71 for the 100th year, and that was, that was a lot of fun. There was a lot of things being done. You know, I've discussed things with Richard about cemetery tours, or perhaps an old-fashioned Battle of the Bands down at the, down by the lake. But it's never too early to start because this takes an entire community. I mean, I've been to Northport for their Uncaged Weekend, and they do an amazing job. Who would thought a small town like that could come together and put on such a huge event? I know we can do it here. I'm just putting it out there. It's really early. But if you have any sentiments, contact me, Richard Schultz, the mayor, or anybody here, and let us know.
Let's get a committee going.
There you go.
The lights are beautiful, by the way. Everything is so nice downtown.
Yes. No? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn then. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.